Sit here through the staff presentation on GWP. So, Artie, I don't know if you're, whenever you're in.
Right.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call to order the joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, March 3, 2009. Mr. City Clerk, could you call the roll?
Council members Najjaran.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yusefian.
Here.
Mayor Drayman.
Here.
For the redevelopment agency.
Agency members Drayman.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver. Yusefian.
Here.
Chairman Najjaran.
Here.
And, Mr. City Clerk, could we hear the report, please?
The agenda for the March 3, 2009, joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency was posted on Thursday, February 26, 2009, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Very good, and could we also hear the item at 1, please?
Item is City Manager regarding consideration of funding request for Luna Playhouse. At 1A is council motion denying request for financial support in amount of $30,000, and at 1B is an agency motion approving request for financial support in amount of $30,000.
Thank you very much. And, Mr. City Manager, I see Mr. Tuktalian at the podium, so let's go to John Tuktalian.
Good afternoon, members of the agency and City Council. During the City Council meeting of January 20, representatives of Luna Playhouse appeared before the City Council asking for Council's consideration of providing financial assistance in the amount of $30,000 for the continued operation of the theater. According to the Playhouse's business development and fundraising manager, the organization is experiencing a shortage of funding in the amount of approximately $30,000, and unless they obtain adequate funding to support their operations, they'll likely be forced to vacate their current location. Currently, the lease for the business has expired, and as a result, they're looking for financial assistance from the city prior to contractually financially obligating themselves to another year at this current location. Representatives have indicated that the organization does not have any additional resources, and they're actively considering relocating to a smaller facility, or I should say, a less expensive facility. In previous years, the Glendale Redevelopment Agency has been approached by other private theater companies in the city of Glendale asking for financial assistance for the expansion of the facilities. To date, the city of Glendale, as well as the redevelopment agency, has not funded either of those within the city's boundaries. In the case of Luna Playhouse, prior to their opening in 2006, city staff worked closely with the representatives to mitigate both ADA accessibility and plumbing code requirements prior to the opening of the theater. As part of these efforts, the redevelopment agency underwrote approximately $5,500 for the costs of both plan check and building permit fees. With the theater's most recent request, staff has identified a number of issues. First, representatives of the Playhouse have not been able to provide a business plan outlining the manner in which the financial assistance would secure their long-term success. Based on the theater's current financial circumstances, it appears that the financial support may merely result in a temporary stabilization of the theater. Second, since the request is intended to provide the financial capital for the business to cover their lease payments for the next 12 months, the subsidy would not necessarily eliminate blight, create new jobs, or create or generate additional revenue for the city's general fund. And finally, representatives of the Playhouse have indicated that the Playhouse has now produced a profit over the last, for at least the last 12 months. As a result, staff does not believe that a one-time effusion of capital is going, is going to significantly alter this trend. Due to the preceding reasons, as well as the current economic climate, staff respectfully recommends that the City Council deny the request for financial assistance to the Luna Playhouse in the amount of $30,000.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tuktalian. All right, we have, we have a number of speaker cards, so let me ask my colleagues if they would like to ask any questions or make any comments before we go to the public, and then we'll come back to you. Mr. Quintero. All right, let's go to the public, then. Our first speaker is Barry Allen, followed by Mike Mohill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, staff, Mr. Starburg, and of course, the public. I'm Barry Allen. It is an interesting plight that the Luna Playhouse is going through, and I know that we have been supporting the Alex Theater at about half a million dollars a year for I don't know how long, until at least 2015, and that really hasn't seemed to really burst out. And yet, we have, we have the council, we've had candidates for public office that say, "We want a vibrant city. We want theater. We want arts. We want museum." And here's a $30,000 investment that can start that moving along. $30,000 out of the redevelopment fund for the Alex Theater wouldn't be missed. Just cutting one person's overtime at $30,000 wouldn't be missed. There are certainly things that we can do without really biting the bullet to help Mr. Stepanian out, to help his fledgling Playhouse out, to give him direction on a business plan and a marketing plan, which, by the way, understand, we invested a lot of money in the live scan, the fingerprinting, and the passport stuff, a lot of money without a business plan, without a marketing plan, with nothing except, "Oh, let's go ahead and do it. Sign some employees, put the capital in and do it," and we watched it lose money ever since it started. Why don't we do this? Why don't we take some of that redevelopment money, and why don't we fund this particular program? Other, other cities have done it. The county's done it, and I'm quite certain that once you do it, you're going to be able to provide that type of an environment that will be inviting to people our actors and actresses and playwrights and directors and bring them into the city. They may even want to live here. They may want to take advantage of the vibrant community that we're striving to get, but we trip over ourselves on the way there. Forget that staff report that says there's no business plan. I got, help them write one. Look at the financials. Make it work. This is something that I think is very important to the city and to the community. Thank you. I'm Barry Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Mike Mohill, followed by Justin Fisher.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Councilman.
Good afternoon.
Barry Allen's a pretty, pretty tough act to follow this afternoon because I think he took the wind out of my sail, honestly. I am surprised to see that one of the big supporters of the theater district, City Council candidate Laura Friedman, is not here promoting it, the Luna Playhouse. I mean, here's the person who says, "I'm for theater. Let's develop it," and where is she? I understand she has her own business, so she can take time off, like I do. Okay, enough for, for her. We talk about having a theater district. Al Hoffman would be a great person to have on this, on this agenda. He could help us out to make this the theater district, Mr. Mayor. You know, the Glendale Symphony is crying for funds. The Glendale Youth Symphony is crying for funds. A Noise Within was crying for funds from the city, and they took their business to the city of Pasadena, a friendly city that loves the arts. They don't talk the talk, they do the walk. All we do is do, "Talk, talk, 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 talk. We want theater. We want theater," and where's the money? Now, Mr. Luna Playhouse, I'd never been there, but you know what? I understand, they produce Armenian plays and non-Armenian plays, and I think that's a good investment. You know, we talk, we talk, we talk, and all you do is talk. Al Hoffman is a businessman, wanted to be part of the Arts Commission. You people turned him down. He would love to help these people over here write a business plan. People on the council here have business background, I think Mr. Najjaran does. Why don't you help these people write a business plan to be expert? After all, artists are not business people. I think we discussed that once before. Glendale Symphony is crying the blues. Glendale Symphony tells me that they can't get any, they love to perform on a, on a weekend, but they don't have the money. Yet we have $500,000 to give the Alex Theater, but we can't find some money to help this little youth symphony that represents the community. Pay raises we have plenty of money for, and pensions we have plenty of money for. One of it, two, a little cutting of the pensions and the, and the salaries, and I'm sure we certainly would find a half a million dollars for all the nonprofit theater groups. Pensions and salaries. You know, gentlemen, I live on Social Security every month, that's $1,200 a month, and I have people in this city who make 20 times more than I make. Where are they coming forward and talking about the community and the arts? Let's put our priorities right. You know, we all don't make $100,000, $200,000 a year. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. Justin Fisher, followed by Tina Tong.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Justin Fisher, and I am the artistic director of a theater company that was, up until a few months ago, located in South Pasadena. We needed a new home, and the reason I'm here today is because the people at Luna Playhouse said, you know, "We're, we're on the verge of losing our lease, but if we can get some help, we want to provide you with that home." So, I came out to show support for them. My company has made money for the past year. The gentleman earlier said that Luna hasn't. Well, we're looking to be a part of Luna, and we have made a good amount of money in the last year. We have a excellent business team that's worked in various theater companies throughout the area, including East West Players in Little Tokyo, and we've mounted collaborative projects with them and other companies. We just closed letters to a student revolutionary. This show ran for three days. It was about the Tiananmen Square massacre, and it has done better than any other show that we have been a part of. Every show we have been a part of has grown and made progressively more money. We're looking to mount an entire year, four plays, as well as many other smaller entertainments, and we're looking to do it here at Luna Playhouse if the city will support Luna. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Mr. Fisher, for the record, what is the name of the theater company?
Metamorphosis Theater Company.
Thank you.
And that's theater with an R-E.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for the clarification on that. Okay. Tina Tong, followed by Asho Tadavosian.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It's, thank you for letting me be here. It's not every day that a young person like me have a panel like this to listen to her speak. I am a part of Metamorphosis Theater Company. I'm the producing director, so that means that I clean toilets, all the way up to my favorite part of the job, which is arts education. And I know arts education is not usually at the forefront of everybody's minds during economic crisis, but when we're in South Pasadena, we were able to let 19 high schoolers come into our company and intern within the year for free, without paying for any classes, and I gave them one-on-one attention of over 100 hours. To meet with them, now they are doing theater in all kinds of states, like over five states. We just recently lost our space in Pasadena, and I want to let you know that I'm ready to bring that program for the high school students here at Glendale, if you guys will have me. The people responsible for Luna Playhouse have so generously invited us to move our business from Pasadena to Glendale. If they get the support that they need financially, I'm ready to help them to establish a good education program for the youth, as well as providing good quality arts for the community, for the neighbors, as well as having a business plan. That's what I am ready to bring, because I'm trained in doing that, but without community support, we cannot do it just by ourselves. So even if the city cannot give us funding, which I urge that, please do consider, hopefully individually, I have brought this to your consciousness that maybe you guys can contribute individually to the Luna Playhouse so that we can teach students how to run the lightboard, how to be successful producers, how to be business people. It's not just about the arts, because there's a whole other side to theater that is about being organized, being well-spoken, being connecting with people, and things like that that are skills that are lifelong, that I can provide for the kids, for the youth, for the high schoolers, if only we have a chance to do it. So, thank you for listening to us, and hopefully we'll see you at the theater very soon. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Dunne. Asho Tadavosian, followed by, followed by Mr. Stepanian.
Hello. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I wasn't, I had a prior engagement, I was supposed to be somewhere else, but I, so I actually wrote an email to everybody, but I'm here today, so not to be repetitive and to keep it brief, I just wanted to stress once again the points that were brought up in that Pasadena has been hailed by some as the cultural center of the West Coast, and it's ironic that Glendale just lost one of our, A Noise Within to Pasadena, and here we have some people who are promising to bring some worth, their work, their experience, everything they've done in the past, their enthusiasm into Glendale and to, to make Glendale a more cultural center, a more, a more experienced center for culture. As far as I'm concerned, I'm in the process of working on an Armenian-language production currently, and me and my partner Tigran Kirakosian will have committed to Luna to produce at least two Armenian-language productions a year as part of our effort to take over the Armenian productions at Luna. Also, we are in the process of working on other forms of performing arts, such as concerts and comedy events, comedy nights. And the, the way we are trying to do this is by trying to use as much of the time during the week that is possible, so that it's not just the weekends and weekend nights that are being used, but also, but also weekdays, afternoons, and other non-peak times, so that we can bring the maximum amount of profit and the maximum amount of work and business and customers into Luna. So, thank you very much for your consideration, and we look forward to your assistance. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tadavosian. Arzad Stepanian.
Hello. Hi. My name is Arzad Stepanian. Thank you, members of the council and Redevelopment Agency. I really want to thank you sincerely for this opportunity, and this is a step in the right direction already. I'm very grateful for that, and what, in the report, it said that Glendale has never actually encouraged or given assistance to any theater company in the past, and I'm saddened by it, but if that is gonna, and we suffered because of that when we started our, our venture, because what happened was, you know, I had been looking for a place, I wanted to have a theater in Glendale for years, and, and in 2004, in 2003, I made up this program, and this has seven major productions here, and I managed to do six of them, some in Armenian, some in English, outside, in North Hollywood and elsewhere, and one or two of them in the library, of course, and I thought, "This is it. We must move to Glendale." And because I lived Glendale, my parents at the time, who were alive, they lived in Glendale, and we looked and looked, and the attitude that we really don't want any theater here for any reason was so detrimental to the difficulties that we faced. We couldn't convince realtors to show us spaces that we wanted to rent with the money ready, and they would say, "Are you crazy, a theater? No." We couldn't convince realtors to actually let, put, let us talk to the landlords to maybe convince the landlord himself. It was so, such a difficult, such an antipathy and hostility almost. So, when we actually finally found a space, and this was maybe one, one mistake that we made, when we actually found a space where landlord was prepared to listen to us, and he wanted six months' rent in advance, and at a very high price, we, maybe our mistake was that, that was, that we actually agreed. We were so anxious to, to get on with it, and the staff mentioned the fact that the city generously waived about $5,000 in fees, but here, listen to this. It took us actually eight months after renting the space to actually start working. And I, it wasn't a city of a Glendale requirement, all about the toilets that everybody knows about. It was actually a California rule that everybody else in Los Angeles seemed to be able to circumvent. So, it took us that long to get the thing going, but now, but we had a plan, and we are going back to this, which you've seen some of it, which will be using our theater constantly, at every, every time, every, we, in December, we had five shows, December of 2006, and we're going to go back to this. You know, in other words, I'm trying to say is that we will be using the theaters every moment that we have, afternoons, evenings, weekends, Sunday mornings, for children's theater, for adult theater, for comedies, for music, for concerts, and that way, we will be, we will ensure that it will survive and it will make money, and we won't be coming back here next year to ask for more assistance from the city. My time is up, so I stop here. Thank you. I meant to show the, all the, maybe one of my colleagues, my friends will do this. We have done so many shows here.
Mr. Stepanian, may I suggest that if you want to give the portfolio to the City Clerk, he can pass it up to the council.
We do very serious.
Redevelopment Agency members.
Okay. We do serious work, and these are some of the posters of it.
Thank you, Mr. Stepanian. Our next speaker is Vahan Aladari, followed by Gabrielle Tolman. Gabriella Tolman.
Mr. Mayor, agency members, good evening, good afternoon, actually. Thank you for giving the opportunity for Luna Theater to present its case here. I think Mr. Yusefian said that if he had the money, all the money in the world, you know, we have been putting all the money in the world in different kind of banks today, billions and billions of dollars, and we're not getting anything in return, and people are losing their homes. We have spent $2 trillion on giving money to the big boys, and we have a tendency of forgetting what's happening in the, in the real America. Unfortunately, Glendale has not been on the map of any artistic event in Southern California for the last 100 years, except John Wayne. You know, when you look at the architectural books that is studied all over the world, I hope Mr. Weaver listens to this one, because it's his specialty. Pasadena has been taught almost in every university in the world. There is no structure in Glendale that has been taught anywhere in the world. Culturally, Glendale has been a very poor city. It's a city of persona non grata. You come here, you get lost. No one has taken any effort to make a city that can feed Hollywood $700 billion. You bring Disney in here, you give them 20% tax breaks, you do all these things for those big, big boys, but you don't realize that these small theaters are the ones who are feeding your next movie stars that you watch on the movie screens, and Mr. Weaver goes and watches them all the time. So, I'm saying this because Mr. Weaver basically has to listen to this a little bit more attentively.
I'm listening.
Good. I think theaters like Luna Theater are a great value for communities, especially the fact that our country is going in a difficult time now. We need culture, and now, more important than any time. It's the fabric of society. It puts people together. We have hundreds of kids, young adults, who've gone through this program here. I know it's not tangible. I know for Mr. Tuktalian, or for the city manager, or people who are looking for tangible results, you don't have tangible results. Tangible is even Hollywood. Porno industry right now is asking for bailout from TARP. Porno industry, right here in San Fernando Valley, $25 billion. They're losing money. So, we need, we need to really rethink how we run our cities, how we run our culture life, and we can ignore the fact that everything is not buildings, everything is not Americana, everything is not Glendale, I don't know, malls, bringing, you know, big businesses here. There's a real America, and we have to protect that, and Luna Theater is really doing the job. Quickly, I'm going to say that what we've done is, we are printing our loyalty cards, and we're working with one of big vendors in this town, that each time a person will do a shopping in Glendale, a certain percentage of the shopping will go to Luna Theater. We're working on that. That will take about six months for us to do it, but that's sort of, is another aspect of our business plan, so hopefully we can get that done, and we don't, you guys don't have to see us anymore and take our lectures, kind of thing. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Gabriella Tolman, followed by Gabrielle O'Sullivan.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your time today. I'm here to propose workshops, creative workshops, for toddlers, kids, and teens for the city of Glendale within Luna Playhouse. Both me and my sister have been teaching throughout Los Angeles, from Bel Air to Inglewood for the last 10 years. We've also created programs for Beverly Hills and Manhattan Beach for both of those cities. We all know the immeasurable benefits of the arts on children, and we hope the city of Glendale understands and values those benefits. I'm also a new mother, and I see with my new two, you know, my now-two-year-old, how important nurturing his creative instincts are. We will provide the toddlers and their mothers in Glendale and surrounding areas such a nurturing and community, and community-building environment through Luna Playhouse. We basically, our plan is to create workshops for the variety of basically toddlers, children, and teenagers, having these workshops for such programs as acting, Shakespeare, creative movements, storytelling, and autobiography into art, where they take their own life experience and create new works. All of these will culminate in performances, which they can invite their friends to, their relatives to, and all of these performances will not only create community, but they will also generate new revenue, revenue for the theater and ultimately, the city of Glendale. Our workshops will provide that, these youth, tools to become professionals within the entertainment community. All over, obviously, Los Angeles, there, the cities provide, but within Glendale, there's very little support for this. Specifically, these workshops will not only create performances, where you can have industry agents, managers, you know, talent, talent agents, writing agents, come and see the youth, but also, will provide them with, we will nurture their talent, their confidence, and their skill. We'll also create things such as acting reels, which everybody needs to go out and become a professional actor. We will film them during workshops. We will film them acting in scenes. We will also create, allow them to have headshots. So we'll basically give them little packages to go out into this, into the, into the city of Los Angeles and pursue professional careers. Through this and through the plays, we'll also unite the community and give the youth in the city a cultural center, which is so needed in this city. As you've heard, we need, they need a place where they can learn, grow, imagine, and inspire, and be exposed to different cultures and new works, and also create new works. We're going to have these workshops that will allow the youth to basically write new, new plays, and then we will showcase their plays. By pursuing this, again, finally, again, the benefits of theater movement, Shakespeare storytelling, all of it is immeasurable, and we hope that the city of Glendale can support that and support Luna Playhouse. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Gabrielle O'Sullivan.
Good afternoon, Mr. Drayman, gentlemen of the council. I wish to address the state of the arts in Glendale. The Glendale Arts, which the name is misleading, represents only a booking agency for the Alex Theater. The supposed Arts Commission of the council has absolutely no teeth, has a $4,000 budget for a year. What in the name of goodness can be done with that? And the supposed new Arts Council, 10 weeks ago today, a lady was here discussing the setup of a new nonprofit called the Arts Council for Glendale. On that particular evening, 10 weeks ago today... On that particular evening, 10 weeks ago today, I spoke to the lady. She said that she would be doing outreach with the arts communities in Glendale. To this day, we have heard nothing from her, and I particularly gave her our number and our names. So the state of arts in Glendale is abysmal. It's disgraceful. You are giving $550,000 to the Alex for their annual funding, plus God knows how much to renovate the, the frontage of the Alex, plus renovate their seating. The imbalance in Glendale is totally unfair. Again, you give money to big projects and big businesses. There are people here who perform for $10 an hour or $11 an hour, which is the rate for equity waiver. They have other jobs to support themselves in order to commit to the arts. It's a disgrace. I am very, very disappointed with the report of the redevelopment agency. The fact that they waived $5,000 three and a half years ago is no great credit to them, considering we had to pay so much to actually set up a theater in a totally empty space. Glendale Council, you need to represent everybody in this community. It's a shame if you are only giving money to big businesses, and the Alex itself has lost money this year. So why, why your agency says that if you give us a mere $30,000, it doesn't indicate that we will continue to run? Yes, it will. It will take pressure off us. For the last three, four months, we have not been able to get on with our artistic programs to our full capacity because of the worry of the lease running out and where we're going to find a home for our theater. So please, put your money considerations aside, put your considerations for big business aside. All of these people have come, and we have a current show with 11 people in the cast, all committing their time, energy and talents for $11 a session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. Okay, that was our last speaker card. Let me go to my colleagues. I'll, I'll start with Mr. Yusefian. Mr. Weaver is looking through the portfolio at the moment, or if someone in the middle would like to go first this time. Why don't I do that, Mr. Yusefian? I'm always picking on you or Mr. Weaver first.
That's okay, Mr. Mayor. At this time, first, I'd like to answer some issues that came out, maybe some clarification is needed. The issue of Alex keeps coming back, why are you paying so much money for Alex? Let me make this very clear. Alex Theater belongs to the people of City of Glendale. It is a city-owned building. The city bought the building, spent $9 million renovating that building. It was ready for the bulldozers, if it wasn't because of the historic society and many, many residents of Glendale to keep it vibrant. There would be no shows anywhere in Alex. It'd probably be some, another building there that was nondescript, and that's why we keep Alex there and we pay for its maintenance because it's no different than the City Hall. We also pay for the maintenance of the City Hall. It belongs to us. There was some talk about Noise Within, while, you know, you did nothing, Noise Within left. I want to make that very clear. Noise Within was in Glendale in the Masonic Temple. Masonic Temple needed help. Previous to this council, or before even Mr. Weaver was on the council, this council voted to pay $2.2 million in modification of that building to make sure Noise Within stayed there. The money was not used, a very small amount was used. Noise Within decided to move to another university, I think it was San Bernardino.
Cal State LA.
Fullerton.
Cal State LA.
Cal State LA. They moved there. They thought it was greener pastures. They found out that it was just a picture. There was no grass there at all. So after a few years, they decided that maybe Glendale was a better place. So they came back to Glendale. We accepted them with open arms, took them back into the facility, helped them out, set up again, and kept going. Let's talk about, well, what else did you do? This council, and I was on that council at the time, offered a piece of land to them, valued at $2 million, 15,000 square feet. We told them, raise the money to build your new building, and we will give you the land. All you had to do is raise $3 million to build a building. Why, they graciously accepted that. They went out there and someone else in Pasadena came over and said, guess what? I have a piece of land and a building on it, which I would like to donate to you, free and clear. Now, if I was in their positions and I had to raise $3 million to build a building or take over another building that's already built and it's given to me for free, I would have chosen exactly what they did. So it wasn't that we didn't try, they decided to go. Now, whether or not they will stay there, or later on, they may decide to come back, our doors are always open, but it's not as bleak as some people make it to be. I have read the staff report, and I will tell you, there is one thing that I do not see in the staff report. Generally, when we get requests for fundings from any other agencies, whether it be any of the merchants associations, or whether it be some other entity, there is a business plan attached to it. You also have to understand, as member of Redevelopment Agency and council, we are required to make sure that there is a logic behind the funds. Why do you want the funds? There needs to be something there that says, okay, when I take the funds, this is what I'm going to spend for rent, this is what I'm going to spend for operation, this is what I'm going to spend for lighting, this is what I'm going to do, and I'm out there doing some other stuff. So what I hear is a lot of the business plan is very fragmented. It is not concisely put together in a package that I can make sense of it. Although, when I came into this meeting this afternoon, only read the, the staff's recommendation, was kind of disillusioned, and I was not going to vote for this. What I heard today gave me some thought to, especially with the new playhouse or the new group that would like to merge with this group, and some of the other items that they mentioned orally. I'd like to see that put together in a written format as a, a plan of what you're going to do and so on and so forth. My problem with oral testimonies are, you give it today in oral fashion, tomorrow it doesn't happen, there's no record of it. I'd like to have it submitted in a concise and clear version with dollars and cents connected. And, Mr. Mayor, my suggestion is not to go with either one of those motions, and if there's a time, I would like to make a substitute motion to maybe continue this matter until such time as they've had an opportunity to come back with a business plan and some of those organizations that they mentioned, what they're going to do, and we have an opportunity to also check on their record.
Okay, Mr. Yusefian, when we, when we get to that point. Ma'am, Mrs. Sullivan, we don't do questions and answers like this. The public has an opportunity to speak on the issue. At this point, we're going to hear from the council, and if one of them wishes to ask you to come up to have an exchange, we can do that. So maybe, maybe that will happen. So just, just don't leave us, okay? Mr. Yusefian, when we get through the, through the discussion, perhaps you'll have your opportunity to make that motion, so we'll see. Councilmember Najjar.
Thank you. When I, when I got this report, I kept turning the pages, expecting to find more information on this request. There simply is, is not much to go by. There are some allusions to this money being, taking some pressure off, off the playhouse. Maybe it will result in an extension of their lease term, but it's not clear at all where this money is going to go. I need to see a, I need to see a budget. I need to see what your revenues are. I need to see what your expenses are. I want to make sure that this $30,000 is actually going to help the playhouse survive and not just go to extend a, a lease for a year for a operation that is going downhill. It may be just the opposite, but I don't know that. And we're talking about using city funds for a, a project, and, you know, we can talk about the arts and how good the arts are, but that's not what we're here to do. We're here to see whether a $30,000 request for this playhouse is, is a viable and reasonable request. I just don't know that. I don't know why we didn't request something like that in detail, because anything that comes before us, any, any organization, you know, let's talk about the CDBG process. I mean, there's an extensive application process. I need to know what the CAPS are. Is the CAPS a parent organization? Is it the entire, does it consist entirely of the Luna Playhouse? Are there other sources for funding? I need to be convinced that a $30,000 infusion is going to maintain the viability of this and that it is a one-year infusion. And I need to know that, because if it's, if it's the intention to have a ongoing $30,000 a year contribution, I definitely have a problem with that. But simply put, there's just a lack of information to go on. So, I mean, if it's Mr. Yusefian's idea to bring it back for more, with more details on that business plan, and I can't do your business plan, I don't know what Mr. Mulchill's talking about. The city can't do your business plan. I mean, that's, that's not appropriate. You know, Mr. Aladadi, you've got a financial officer. I mean, I think we need the very basic information to make a decision on. This is the taxpayer's money. It's the city's money. We'd love it to go to a great cause, but you have to prove to us, aside from your great, you know, your portfolio looks great, the posters are great, I need to know that it's going to make a, a lasting effect on the Luna Playhouse and not just fill a, fill a hole before the next crisis arises.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Najjar. And Mr. Quintero.
I have some comments. I'd like Mr. Aladadi and Ms. Sullivan to come to the, come to the front here. Just have a seat there, ma'am. Well, I also agree. The report's quite sketchy. It just doesn't give us enough information to try to figure out what exactly the money would go to and so forth. So with more information, I think I can make a more informed judgment. Mr. Stepanian is someone that I've known for a long time and known about and watched on television for years. And so anyway, I believe in what he's trying to do, and I certainly believe in what the nonprofit is trying to accomplish. One of the questions I have from the staff, from the redevelopment staff, would be, or from Mr. Starbird, where would the funds come from? What account?
Well, that we don't know. Depends on the purpose. If it's, if it's capital money, you could use redevelopment. The redevelopment really shouldn't go for operations. But if the council has an interest, obviously, there's any number of different ways to make something work. At least what we're hearing so far is a need, I think, for us to go back and define, for the theater company, what information we need. And it sounds like with the, with the advent of the theater from South Pasadena, working with them, they may have the ability to provide us with the kind of information that you're looking for. But I think we'd want to see data from the past year, attendance, financials, operating costs, and then we want to see projections on the future, at the least, including some targets and the viability of the theater, as you note, beyond the next year. And then specifically, what, what would this money go to support in the interim? But again, we can, we can outline that for them. We can't, we can't put it together for them, though, because we just don't know.
Right. I have a question for Mr. Aladadi, and perhaps he can answer it, or someone else. I noticed in one of the productions that they actually used the Star Theater. So is that kind of back in operation, more or less, there on Bryant Boulevard?
It was just a one, it was, it was just the one instance that the Star Theater was used.
And our own theater had a, a production at the same time. And this was income-making for Luna, because our director was hired to do that. So that was income coming into Luna.
What's the seating at the Star Theater?
About 300, something.
It's quite large.
500? That big?
It's privately owned.
Yeah, no, I know, I know all about it. I'm just.
When, when we requested from the city for the funding, the city did not ask us for any kind of business plan.
Right. Well, okay, have a seat. Yeah, that's what I was going to say next, that in fact, I mean, we can't be too critical of, of Luna Playhouse and the nonprofit if they weren't asked to provide that type of information. So, yeah, I'm in agreement, I'm in agreement there. Look, I mean, this is worth exploring. I just think this is kind of a sketchy report. We don't have, we really don't have a feel for what, for what is possible. And so I would also agree that we can try to get some more information before we make a decision as to, either way, as to what we're going to, what we're going to do. And I would like some more information also about CAPS, a community and arts project and services. I noticed that it's a 501(c)(3). So those are my comments.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Quintero. Mr. Weaver.
Well, some of the comments I heard today are very insulting me personally. I've lived in this city longer than anybody in this room has been alive, almost 70 years. And you talk about, you know, the history of this city? No, you don't. Forget the Alex Theater, built in 1925, went to many movies at that theater. Star Theater, that used to be the Roxy Theater. That's why it has the seating capacity. We had the Capitol Theater. We had the Glendale Theater. We had the Glendale Symphony, Carmen Dragging conducting the orchestras. Glendale Center Theater, the oldest operating, continuing operating theater in the United States of America in Glendale. And they host hundreds and hundreds of kids all the time. Yesterday, you could have seen them walking down the street, must have been 200 kids. Busloads come in to the Glendale Center Theater for training. We have the oldest arts organization in the state of California. Now, we've had a lot of demographic changes over the years, but I grew up in a community here that appreciated the arts and still does. But it's a different day today. We're sitting here talking about budget cuts, over $8 million in budget cuts, and here, we're sitting here talking about giving out more money. We don't give 550,000 to the Alex. We give 415, I believe, or 430. And the Glendale Arts is not a booking agent for the Alex Theater. It's much more. If this thing comes back again, I'm going to make sure. The Glendale Symphony Orchestra is here to ask for a handout. The Glendale Center Theater is here. The Glendale Youth Orchestra that plays at, let's see, what do they do? Glendale High or, no, Alex Theater, always on Tuesdays, so we can't go to it. I'm going to make sure, and the Arts, Glendale Arts, I'm going to make sure they're all here with their handout to ask for the money. If we're going to start down the road of giving it to one group, then let's consider them all. It's not fair to single out one group. And then we'll figure out what we're going to cut out of something else to fund this. Now, let's see, we'll eliminate a few police or a few fire. Yeah, let's go to three men on a fire wrench and use that money. You know, we'll find a way to do it, which the people will support. It isn't going to happen, folks, not in this day and age, not with the economy the way it is, until it turns around. We have a lot of people that are in the arts, whether they be in the theaters, actors, actresses, artists, musicians that live in Glendale. There are a lot here. They believe in an art community. We're struggling with to get it going. It's not going to happen with the Glendale Arts and Culture Commission. No, it has not performed. I voted against it when it started because I said it should be done privately, and I still believe privately, they can do it, because the people are out there. I look at the business plan, or not the business plan, but I look at the report. Remember, we gave $5,500. That was because of the problem with the number of restrooms required by code, which eventually were put in. We gave a business retention money, $5,500, to Luna Playhouse. Now, we're asked to give $30,000 more, which in essence, to what I'm reading, is to guarantee lease payment. lease payment for a year. I don't know where you park cars at that event, but it seats 40 peoples, I understand it. This council chamber seats well over 100. Now, you tell me how giving money to an organization that has not made the money yet, we haven't seen it, that seats only 40, is going to do all this for Glendale. I'd be willing to bet on the Alex Theater, which has more increased bookings this year than they've ever had in number of days used. Glendale Center Theater continues to operate well, not in here for public assistance. Glendale Arts, I know when I was on the Glendale Arts organization, because I'm an artist, we had to move around from vacant storefront to vacant storefront, because the city had no place for them, where they could call a permanent home, and they still don't. The community foundation, Community Concerts Association is folded up. They met, they gave concerts on Sunday at the Glendale High School. No offense, but most of the people attended were older than I am. And changing times, fewer and fewer people to go to it, as they pass on with their great rewards. So it's folded up, changing times, different ethnic makeup, different desires. Gosh, now you can watch television on your cellphone. Hey, God, I grew up, you know, I went to the cartoons at the Alex Theater, that was it, on a Saturday morning, because there was no such thing as a television. Changing times. Society's got to adjust to the changing times. No comment from the audience. It's my turn to talk. So I'm not going to support this. You could give me a business plan, but I guarantee you, I will have all those organizations in here with their business plans and what they want is a free handout from the city. And then I'll ask that we compare this against all the other needs of the community. Once we identify that's coming out of redevelopment or general fund reserves, we'll compare it against the programs in those areas and see what we're going to cut. Because at some point in time, we've got to get fiscally conservative and keep this city the way it has been, fiscally conservative, and not just hand out money because people want us to hand out money. And what I've said is not popular with the people in this room. I understand that. I'm not going to sit up here and dance around the issue and say something I don't believe. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Weaver. Mr. Quintero.
Yeah, I forgot to mention that in addition to the financial aspects and so forth, I think we should also, the Luna Playhouse also needs to investigate, I don't know, other possible locations or something other than what they're doing because of the size of that particular location and so forth. Then in terms of any funding, any funding that I would approve, and I'm not saying I'm going to approve it, I just want to take it to the next step. Let's talk about it. Let's see what you have in mind. That would need to come out of redevelopment. I mean, I just don't see any way, any way other than to have it come specifically out of redevelopment. But all I'm saying is, I want to keep a open mind, let them make a little better presentation in terms of what they have in mind, and then we'll see where it goes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Quintero. Well, it is not terribly surprising that a small theater company with 40 seats is struggling. It's not surprising that a community theater is, does not have as its expertise writing up and a advanced or a very elegant business plan, because that's not usually what community theaters do. However, and I can say that with some experience, but let me just say also that when you do come to the city, a city, and ask for funds in these economic times, when the city has so many nonprofits that are looking for sources of funds, that is the time you do need to dig in and develop a business plan that makes some sense. Now, I've also heard from, I believe, Ms. Sullivan, that they were not asked for such a thing. It's all right. You don't, it's...
I did ask on the night that I was told, I did ask Mr. Kasakian and one or two other people on the council, but we...
We can't have an exchange if you're not at the microphone, Ms. Sullivan, but it's all right. It's an academic point. The point is, right now, we have nothing before us that is a business plan for us to look at. So what I really don't want to engage in here is a group of artists coming in, running a playhouse, knocking and condemning other arts groups within the city, whether it be the Alex Theater or, you know, any of the other arts organizations, to make their point that we should subsidize or underwrite them to some degree. And I'm also not so pleased with my own colleagues sitting up here knocking this arts institution by extolling other arts groups. We have, we do have a very broad arts community in the city of Glendale. What has always bothered me as a native Glendalean is that Glendale, the city of Glendale, has never been involved in our arts community, really. We point to groups like the Luna Theater and to the Alex Theater and to Noise Within and the Glendale Symphony and Glendale Youth Orchestra and all of these different entities and say, there, somewhere in there, you go figure it out. That's our commitment to the arts. In other words, we take the sum inventory of the arts in Glendale and say, yeah, that's it. But the city is never really in its, and I don't just, I'm not faulting the current city staff or city management. It's always been that way in Glendale. It's just always how we've been. I keep saying that we've been bucking this 102-year history of tradition of sort of ignoring the arts. We know they're out there, and we point to them when we want to talk about how advanced we are culturally in Glendale. But other than that, we generally, you know, draw the window shades. So I will tell you, and I'll be very upfront with you, because I don't want to be one to dance around the issue, that my intention, if this were coming to a vote today, from what I've heard here and what I've been looking at and reading and considering and thinking about, is that I would vote probably right now, if I had to vote on this, to, it would be to deny this request, because I can't make economic sense of it. However, I am inclined at this point to, as one individual elected official, to support the idea that Mr. Yusefian has brought forward. It's not to say I'll vote for it when it comes back, but I want to give it fair consideration. And so I want to see what it is you're talking about. You've brought something new into the equation today. Mr. Fisher stood up here and talked about partnering with Luna. And so I want to know what that's about. It is, it would pain me greatly to watch a small theater go away, a theater with an equity, a small theater contract go away. That would upset me. I wouldn't want to do it. I was prepared to do that today. But this is a new wrinkle, so let's explore it. And I think that this city, I would urge this city, I'm hearing it from my colleagues, frankly, I'm even hearing it from Mr. Weaver, even though he has expressed his view quite succinctly, however, I'm hearing it, I think, from all of my colleagues. Nobody up here wants to destroy a theater. But by the same token, you have to understand, it's not necessarily the city's responsibility to keep a private business open in this case. So let's give them the benefit of the doubt. Let's have them come back. Let's see what you can bring us in the way of a business plan and what you're talking about with this partnership with Metamorphosis Theater Company. Is there still someone here from that group? Can somebody come to the microphone and at least tell me what, so far, we've heard two representatives. One said they're in South Pasadena, the other said Pasadena. Mr. Fisher said South Pasadena, and Ms. Tong said Pasadena, and I have no idea what theater space they're using. So can somebody clarify that?
South Pasadena.
Please come to the microphone, so you're on the record.
No, they were in a...
Mr. Sapanian, please come to the microphone, so it's on the record.
Metamorphosis Company, they were in South Pasadena, and apparently, the whole building that they were housed in had, it had to be either renovated or pulled down completely or anyway...
What is the theater space they're using?
They had, they had a space at the basement, large basement room of a building in Pasadena, South Pasadena. I don't know it. I've never been there. So I didn't know.
All right. Thank you very much for helping me with that. In any case, that's what I would, that's what I'm inclined to support. And again, I want to make it very clear, I'm not, I'm not saying I'm going to vote for that when it comes back, but I think I want to try to extend every lifeline possible here. And beyond this 30, this particular request for 30,000, and by the way, there's nothing in this report that explains to me why 30,000 as opposed to $30,125 or $32,500 or $35,800. I don't know why 30. How do we get to that figure? Is it just the rent totaled up for a year? Is that what we're talking about? And if so, that doesn't constitute to me a business plan for a theater. But in any case, those are things that could be included. I am, I can't make the motion, but I'd be certainly happy to entertain such a motion. And then we can get into it. But before you do, Mr. Yusefian, let me just, let me just encourage our city staff on something here to do something. Please, let's sit down with the folks from Luna Playhouse. Let's talk about this, and let's see what we can do, not only in terms of this, this 30,000, but where, what are the other options within the community, so these funds may not be coming out of our coffers. And let me just also remind that we talk about redevelopment money as though it's not taxpayer money. It absolutely is. It just comes from a different source, and it's the other pocket. So I know it's not what Mr. Quintero meant, but what I'm saying to you is to you in the audience, redevelopment funds are somehow looked at as not being taxpayer dollars, and they are. So, you know, we do have a responsibility here. And thank you, Mr. Yusefian, for pointing out the fact the Alex Theater is, was purchased to be our performing arts center. It is a city facility, and so that is why we support it. And I've got news for you. There'll be, there'll come a time, folks, where I probably won't be sitting up here anymore, and I'll be out there arguing that the city should continue its underwriting to some degree of the Alex Theater after the agency sunsets, because I think that that is what we should do. But in any case, I need to see a plan. I need to see what the concept is supposed to be. I need to see, you're asking the city to be your partner. I think it makes sense that you should tell your partner, potential partner, what the 30,000 is for, how it will be spent, and so on. And we need to know about, more about Metamorphosis Theater Company and their viability as well. So, okay. Mr. Yusefian.
So with that, Mr. Mayor, at this point, I would like to make a motion that this item to be continued at such time that Luna Playhouse is able to put together a marketing plan, a business plan, and come back to the city of Glendale. Also, at that point, I also like to have the redevelopment agency look and see if there are other opportunities in other locations. Economy is kind of soft now. There's a lot of vacancies that are taking place, so there may be another location that may suit them better with a much lower rate. So sometimes that gives us an opportunity, and I know the redevelopment agency sometimes gets calls from some of the real estate agents saying that they have this type of space available to be rented and so on and so forth. So if you could also look at that, that would be very helpful.
Mr. City Manager.
Can I suggest in the motion, in addition to the information Mr. Yusefian has identified, and such other information, as the staff may feel necessary to give you a complete picture? For example, some historical data on their first year of operation and what that was like, and maybe, you know, the nature of their rent versus other market rents. We don't know exactly what they're being charged and what other facilities down there would go for. My sense is, now that they've made the improvements, they're being given a pretty stiff rent.
Absolutely.
But such other information, for example, as we might need.
That's exactly what I meant. That's my motion.
Yes, Mr. ...
Hey, I suggest that that motion be converted, instead of a motion to continue, that's just a motion to take off calendar, since we do not have a specific date to come back, and we're not trying to hold them to a specific short timeframe. We can take the motion off calendar, consistent with the other requirements.
The direction, Mr. City Manager.
I suspect the next question will be, when can it come back? I don't think it'll take long for us to sort of outline the information we think they'd need, and to get a sense from them how long it will take them to put it together. Other things like looking at various sites, that may take a while longer, but at least the basic information, I think you'd need to decide whether you want to step into this or not. We can put together fairly quickly, depending on how long it'll take them to produce it.
And I think, is that, do we have a consensus on that, at least? Mr. Yusefian?
Yeah.
Mr. Najari? Mr. Quintero? Mr. Weaver?
No.
Okay. I think we do have a consensus, however. I would encourage the folks from the theater, you know, let's, let's not rip the city arts community apart in the process of this. You know, the Arts Council presentation was six weeks ago. The presentation from Cindy Cleary of a list to this council of the people to be contacted was barely two and a half weeks ago. None of it was 10 weeks ago, and you haven't received a letter, because the letter, it takes time, as we said. The letter going out has been drafted, and it's going to come to this council for their looksee before it goes out and that interview process begins. The reason it's taking time, folks, is because the city of Glendale's never done this before. So we're trying to make sure we don't make yet another misstep. In any case, let's try to keep this, elevate this discussion to something on an upbeat and positive level, and that's what the, that's what arts and culture is supposed to do for a city, anyway. So, anyway, I thank you all for coming, making your case, and I thank my colleagues for listening with such an open mind to them.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would suggest you actually vote on the motion, take the matter off calendar, subject to them bringing to staff the appropriate marketing plan, business plan, and such other information, as Councilmember Yusefian suggested. We'll have a solid record of that.
Okay.
We'll have that, both to give to them, and staff will have that as well.
Would someone like to take that as a motion?
That's my motion.
All right. And we have a second. All right. Is there any further discussion? No? Mr. Kasakian?
Councilmembers Najari?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
No.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Draymond?
Yes. All right. Thank you all very much.
Motion.
Move to adjourn for council?
Second.
We are adjourned. Council is adjourned.
Move to adjourn for redevelopment agency?
Second.
Agency is adjourned.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Let us move to our special meeting.